All right. Thank you, Bob. And it looks like we do have a quorum. So. Uh, let me begin by calling a planning board meeting to order. It is March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one at seven P M. And uh, let me just start by reading the opening statement. This open meeting of the Hopkinson Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth through the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID virus, we are compliant with the executive order that suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The executive order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as the public body makes provisions through adequate alternative means to ensure interested members of the public are provided reasonable access to the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. It will further include several or a a public hearing. This meeting, the planning board is convened by video conference via Zoom app as opposed to the town's web meeting calendar and the board's agenda identifying how the public may join. Additionally, the meeting is being broadcast by H cam through multiple platforms. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website via the web meeting calendar unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know otherwise. Before we begin our first agenda item, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Uh, I want to introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. The chair will invite board members to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If other if members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Not every agenda item will feature public comments for items with public comments. Uh, after members have spoken, the chair will forward public comment as follows. All participants should use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, then wait to be acknowledged by the chair. All participants must begin by stating their name and address, and participants must limit their comments to three minutes or less. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And lastly, I'm just gonna quickly do roll call here. So um. Members, when I state your name, please respond if you are here. Uh, Rob Benson. Let's see, Rob, Muriel Kramer.
You're a Kramer present.
Jane Moran.
Jane Moran, present.
Dave Paul.
Dave Paul, present.
Mary Larson Marlowe.
Mary Larson Marlowe, present.
Deb Feinberg.
Deb Feinberg here.
Sundar Savarmen. I don't, I think he said he was not going to be able to be here and Fran DeYoung.
Fran DeYoung, present.
All right. And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Gelsic.
Don Gelsic, present.
Ms. Pemberton.
Effie Harrington, present.
And Mr. Paradise.
Phil Paradise and Beta, present.
All right. Um. All right. Well, really quickly, we'll just go through uh what we have for an agenda uh this evening. Uh, and we have just one public hearing tonight of which uh I expect we will be able to um get to a vote upon. So let's actually, but just before I forget, let's go ahead and um. I will entertain a motion to open the uh uh public hearing uh Wilson Street.
So moved Gary, it's Muriel.
Thank you, Muriel.
I can, Fran.
Thanks, Fran. Uh, assuming no further discussion, we will go ahead and vote. Uh, Muriel.
Muriel Kramer's yes.
Jane.
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave.
Dave Paul, yes.
Mary.
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Deb.
Deb Feinberg, yes.
Fran.
Fran DeYoung, yes.
And I don't see Rob there, but Rob. And Gary Trendle is a yes. Um, all right. So we'll get to that a little bit uh from the on the administrative front. We need to continue our discussion on the revised stormwater management erosion control bylaw that we discussed uh two weeks ago. We also have um some recommendations of some minor changes from town council with regards to pesticides, herbicides, and synthetic fertilizers for the proposed uh solar bylaw amendment. I didn't see the minutes in the packet. So, okay, just wanted to make sure I didn't miss that. So we will not have any minutes review. Um, and then I did want to just quickly um ask for input on um uh on topics for future meetings. Uh, not on our agenda, but we're not going to discuss any details, but uh I'd like to start circling back with um all of our other committees committees that we serve on and um start uh building in some updates from those other committees. So we could just talk about that briefly. So let's get into the first one, which is the revised stormwater management and erosion control bylaw. Um, as you all, I'm sure recall, we had a representation from town council um explaining what they were asking us to review and do. I know that uh we had asked that if people had questions and further review, they submit those um to either John or myself, and we didn't get any questions or comments. John, is there any other? Any other updates or anything else we should be aware of with regards to the revised stormwater management erosion control bylaw amendments from town?
Other updates that I know of, but I saw John Westling just came on to the call. So if he is available and is willing to also answer that question. I think that would be beneficial. I don't know if he can hear us.
Mr. Westerlane.
Good evening.
How are you, Mr. Chairman?
Members of the planning board, good evening.
Um, I don't know if you just heard the the very brief conversation previously, but we were just moving to our first agenda item, which is the revised stormwater management erosion control bylaw.
Yes.
Um, that we talked about at our last planning board meeting, but um was wondering if you had any comments or updates um on the that uh on those amendments from uh town council.
I do not, Mr. Chairman, and I think that we're ready to go uh short of any proposed edits or comments that might uh require us to make an edit. So I think we're good to go.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any further questions or comments from the board? And unfortunately, town council is not able to join us tonight. So if there are questions specifically for town council, then we would not be able to answer them, but um. Any other comments or questions? Fran.
Gary, I just, you know, look at reviewing the letter from town council dated the tenth. I mean, it looks like the changes uh were necessitated um to comply with the uh MS four permit. That in in a nutshell.
That's it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it seems pretty straightforward to me in in terms of what they've kind of identified. So um. Now, unless I'm missing something, I think it's led out pretty well by the the letter by council.
Through the chairman.
Yes, Mr. Westerlane.
Uh, you hit the nail on the head. It is actually uh it is absolutely a requirement of the MS four permit. Um, and we have weighed in with town council and our engineer who's helping us out with compliance. And we believe that this will pass and keep us in uh compliance with the law. So I would ask if respectfully, if the planning board would consider putting a vote together to support the amendment so that when we get the town meeting, we can have uh planning board support.
Uh, well said. And if there aren't any, oh, Jane, go ahead, Jane.
Um, sure. So if I this question through the chair, if I could ask John a question. Um, what's the big difference between the past law and the new law? So that some people may be interested in that.
Uh, through the chair, I think that town council hit the uh, you know, she laid out the details. I don't know that it's that much of a big difference. Uh, it's more for lots that will uh disturb more than an acre of land. So the residents uh will not feel an impact of this bylaw. It's more geared towards construction and development when when developers are coming in and taking raw land disturbing more than an acre to to create a a subdivision or, you know, developing a site plan, but all in the name of protecting the wetlands, protecting the rivers and the waterways.
Okay, so if it's more than an acre going forward, what was it before?
Uh, I think that it was still just an acre. However, so the the modifications in the amendment only affect those those parcels still above an acre.
So it doesn't really sound like it's a really big change.
Uh, honestly, it is not, and we only had to bring in council and our our consultant engineer just to ensure that we were in compliance with the MS four permit, which is a permit issued by the EPA through the Massachusetts D E P. And because of their experience with other communities that have had to con comply and who may have been audited by the EPA, we wanted to make sure that our bylaw met restricted here and so that if we ever were audited, we would be in compliance.
Thank you. That's helpful.
You're welcome.
All right. So John, just a quick process question here. Um, and I'm gonna entertain a motion in a second here, but that that motion should be to recommend approval of these stormwater of the revised stormwater management erosion control bylaw. Is that the correct language?
That would suffice, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then on that note, I will entertain a motion to recommend approval uh of the revised stormwater management erosion control bylaw um as uh written in our uh meeting packet.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right. We have motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Fran, did you have another comment or?
I was just seconding Muriel.
All right. So if there's no further discussion, uh, we will take a vote. Uh, so we'll start with um Muriel.
Muriel Kramer's a yes.
Jane.
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave.
Dave Paul, yes.
Mary.
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Deb.
Deborah Feinberg, yes.
Uh, Fran.
Fran DeYoung, yes.
And Gary Trendle is a yes. And again, Sundar and Rob are not on this evening. So.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, members of the planning board. I thank you for your time in helping us to be in compliance and protect our waterways. If there's nothing else, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to sign off and wish you a great meeting.
All right. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John.
Um, the second administrative item this evening is um some uh recommended minor changes to the pesticides, herbicides, and synthetic fertilizers section of the solar bylaw amendment. And uh, hope you've all had a chance to read that letter from town council. Um, I think it's reasonably self-explanatory. Um. But uh, and I apologize, I don't have the letter in front of me and I can't access it from this computer. I did read it yesterday, but um. John, are you able to just hit on, oh, even better. But um. Yeah, I think if you scroll up um the.
Chair, can we make it bigger, please?
Thank you so much.
So if you scroll up, John. Just want to get to the rationale first. Uh, one up. There we go. So if you look at the third paragraph, the attorney general in the past has disapproved bylaws that regulate the use of herbicides because they are preempted by Massachusetts pesticide control act. For that reason, we recommend that you revise section two ten two oh four to strike text related to pesticides, herbicides, and synthetic fertilizers. And so now if you scroll down. We can see those proposed revisions. We'll give everybody a chance just to look and process this. Um, and maybe what we'll do is uh, and Mary, I don't know, did you uh, did Zach have a have a an opportunity to discuss this at all? Or I guess I just wondered, does any um any Zach recommendation?
Um, yes, through the chair. Um, we did. We we certainly wanted this in here because we wanted um. I I think in the past, it's it's um, we've had wording to this effect that we didn't want um pesticides, herbicides, et cetera. We just strengthened the wording. Um, and um, I'm looking at the chapter one thirty two B in the Mass General laws. And it it really simply, you know, regulates the use and distribution sale, et cetera, but it doesn't, it doesn't say anything about not ha- um allowing no use, you know, so it it it's I'm I'm confused about why we can't have something stronger than what um the Mass General laws states. So, I mean, I think that's that's all it is. It's not saying, yes, you should use it according to the labeled instructions. And it's like, obviously. But we don't want it used at all. So are they saying that Mass General law will not allow us to say that? John, do you have any clue?
It's my understanding from town council that uh effectively, yes, Mass General law through the Attorney General's office will not allow prohibition of that because it is already addressed in the Massachusetts laws.
But it isn't addressed.
I'm not an attorney. I'm getting this from town council, so I'm just passing on the message.
Yeah, okay. That's what confuses me because it isn't addressed. So um, at least at the moment, I would recommend the second recommendation. Um, the, you know, to to still include. So it's the the wording at the bottom. A special permit may include limitations on or other requirements related to the use of pesticides or besides synthetic fertilizers. And um, the planning board shall consider potential impacts to public health and environment, et cetera, et cetera. Um, they do say that there's a possibility that um that this will, this wording will not be allowed within the bylaw. But um, I don't get the impression that it would be striking down our entire bylaw. It would just be striking this wording.
Yeah, that was my question. John, I don't know if you have any additional detail, but let's just say that the attorney general did have issue with this. What is the impact of that on this bylaw if it was approved at town meeting?
It's a good question because um I believe the zoning bylaw itself has a several severability clause, but I don't know if that applies to the whole bylaw or just to certain sections. And since this would be his own article, if this would also need a severability uh clause. So if basically meaning if they struck down one section, they would strike down all of it. And not just the one section. So that would, I'd have to ask town council that. I don't know the answer right now.
Okay. So I I'll tell you, my my, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I I did have a question too. Um, what's our timeframe? We can, we can amend the wording all the way up to town meeting, right? Now that it's on the warrant. Is that correct, John, or?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So there's no rush.
Small rush.
I I I think the 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 only repercussion is that the warrant is going to be finalized, I think, next week. Um, and so while, yes, we could still make changes to it, it just gets a little bit more
messy.
complicated. That's that's the the downfall to it.
Yeah, it would be great if it could be. Um, i- is there a way through you, Mr. Chair, that we could maintain the wording? Um, and uh, and then get clarification, obviously, from town council about the severability.
That's exactly my thought. I I think we need a little bit more clearer your discussion with town council. Uh, I I know for me, I'm not comfortable removing this based on what they said and and what what Mary just shared with us. I I'd like to understand a little bit, a little bit more about the severability as as well as why taking a stronger position on pesticide, herbicide, and fertilizer use is is a a problem for this bylaw.
So through the chair.
Yes, John.
This, and I think this is pretty clear, but I just want to make it even more clear. Town council did say that this could always be included as a condition, and that's how they recommended going about it. I I don't know the reason why taking out of the bylaw is, or I guess leaving it in the bylaw is not okay, but making it a condition is okay. But that is how they um suggested we move forward is just taking it out as a requirement and then requiring it as a condition for each special.
Yeah, I just, I I also know that the language is always stronger when it's in a bylaw. And it's your point. Um, we could probably, I know we could deal with it through a condition, but it's not nearly as sticky as a condition as it is as a bylaw.
And that's why the, I think, the second recommendation, because it because it makes it clear that, yes, this is something we'll consider. And um, at least that leaves it in the bylaw that we we may impose conditions. So that, I don't know, gives people a heads up that it's that it's on the plate.
Yeah. Are there any objections from folks that we uh get some additional clarity from town council?
I think it's the right course of action, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. All right. So I think that there is uh no action for us uh on that one, but um, John. I'm wondering if John, would you recommend that, is this something that we'd be better off with um just asking in 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 writing for some additional clarity, or is it worth um a brief conversation with with town council?
Uh, I am emailing town council right now, and I was gonna ask, and I was hoping they were standing by their computers for just such a question.
Okay.
If not, I was going to try and go offline and talk to uh Brian um this weekend and just kind of pick his brain about that and then bring it back to the board.
Okay. All right. So so let's go ahead and and move on for the time being. Um, if by some reason, if by by some chance you do get some additional information tonight, then then we can come back and and revisit it. But I I think as a as a board, I I think we're pretty well aligned that that we we'd like to leave this in there if we can. And uh, if it doesn't make sense, then we just want to some additional detail about exactly why it doesn't make sense. Uh, okay. And then the last administrative I had, administrative item I had on here was um just wanted to get some input from the board on um future topics. Um, there are a number of other committees that we liaise with. And so it is also, as I look at our um future meeting agendas, we have a little bit of space. So I thought it might be a good opportunity for um some updates from um those other committees upon which we serve. So we have a uh April twelfth meeting, which is our next meeting. I think two things. One, I think it's worth doing a more formal update from our subcommittees that um all of us have been working, working through. So I'd like to add that. I know that we are also a little overdue for an update from the uh uh the growth subcommittee.
Growth Study Committee, yeah.
Study Committee, thank you. I'm having a hard time speaking.
Not sorry.
Um, and I'm just gonna open it up to the planning board. Are there other other committees that you think would be worth um having them or you actually provide an update to the uh to the planning board?
So through you, Mr. Chair, the Growth Study Committee is finalizing their report. So I think the timing is actually really perfect. Um, and and it's an, and if we have time in the agenda, I think the Growth Study Committee has come up with some really interesting data and some things to consider, not necessarily recommendations, but some things to consider. So I it feels uh like it could be a really nice opportunity to to have some space to have a conversation as well. Um, so.
I fully agree. Um, I know there's, I don't know if other folks have anything from uh open space, from trails, from uh, I I don't think there's a big need from CPC, but I could do that. Um, Zach, we're certainly, I think, pretty well looped in with right now.
Are you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dave.
So um, we are putting together something for the uh Trails Committee, um some kind of presentation, but I think we'll need a little bit of time on it. So maybe just get on an agenda a month or two from now.
Okay. Uh, I will say, we we currently are slated for a meeting on May third. Um, that's also the May third that would normally be town meeting, but with town meeting moving to the next Saturday. I'm almost inclined to well, let's, let's I'm wondering if if based on if we don't need that May third meeting. I'm inclined to to not have that if we if we don't need it. Um, so John, let's just not schedule anything for that May third meeting if we can avoid it.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Chair, too. Um, we've been a couple of years now with um Zach's new process, and I think that we are very comfortable and sort of mightily thrilled with it. But it might be a nice opportunity to share with the public how the process has played out um is ongoing and and just the ways the public can continue to interact with it. It's just a a thought. I don't, I don't think the planning board necessarily needs an update, but it's a really, I think it's turned out to be a really strong process. Kudos to Mary and everybody on this act committee. Um, and I think it's just maybe a nice opportunity to just highlight it and the process and and how you carry things forward and and how the public can continue to interact. It's just a thought.
Through the chair.
Yes, Mary.
Um, at the last Zach meeting, Maury Gasser from Halt um gave us a presentation um related to the halt management of lands. The public lands attached to O S L P Ds. And this presentation was very enlightening for all of us. And if there is appropriate amount of time um for us to to have this presentation at the planning board and learn from it, I think that would be great for all of us because it is something that certainly we're taking into account at Zach in looking at the O S L P D um bylaw. But it's also, or guideline or whatever it is, I can't remember. Um, but it also is relevant in simply our review process for O S L P Ds and the negotiation process around the um the borders and the, you know, how it all fits together. Okay?
So I've I've seen that presentation. I agree. I think it's a good one. Um, so here's what I'm gonna suggest. Um, I know this is gonna be a largely uh planning board driven meeting. But um, I think it's, it's uh at that April twelfth meeting, maybe we plan for um each of our working groups or subcommittees um to provide a brief update on progress. We have the Growth Study Committee uh provide an update. Um, and I, again, just in my conversations with with um the chair, I think that that April twelfth, I think, should be reasonable. Um, and we have um Maury as well um with the uh the the halt. I don't know if I necessarily want to call it recommendations, but but overview and info, because I I would agree with Mary. I think that as we're looking at other subdivisions, I think that that's um super useful context for us. Um, and then on the Trails Committee, um, we will slate that in. Maybe it's uh May seventeenth. Does that seem reasonable to you, Dave?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
So Gary.
Yes, Jane.
Um, I poked in uh your meeting when you presented to the T C M C last week, which was very interesting. And it could be that the upper Charles needs to give an update to just clarify confusion between the Trails and our group and the different groups and it.
Yeah. I I think that's a great idea. Maybe what we do is we also slot in Upper Charles Trail Committee with the Trails Club. That way we can kind of consolidate the.
Yeah, and I think it might. And it might be useful to see the parallel uh cities together to see how they differentiate and how diversified they're at, but at the same time, you know, beneficial for the town, but in a different way.
Yeah. I think that makes sense. Fran?
Yeah, Gary, I think that's actually a pretty good uh flow that you're stitching together here because I think coming out of the Growth Study Committee along with Halt and then the follow-up meeting, again, it'll be a little bit later, but with Trails and the growth study committee along with HALT and then the follow-up meeting, again, it'll be a little bit later, but with trails and Upper Charles, I think there's gonna be a lot of synergies, a lot of ideas brought forth to the planning board, really to start to think from a planning perspective. Correct. What, what the future could potentially be and knowing some of the different players and constituents that are part of that, I think will allow this group to, you know, feel pretty good that they've got a, a handle around the current status and some of the resources kind of helping drive forward. So I, I, I'm all for this.
Yeah, great. Okay. All right. Um, so I think, uh, well, we just added a bunch of stuff under our agenda, which I think is good. It's important. It's planning related. Um, I also don't want to add any more right now because I know that all of those, uh, action items bring, bring work with them. All right. So let's go ahead and turn to our lone public hearing this evening, Wilson Street, Cedar Street. Proposed amendments to the solar special permit and stormwater management permit. And I see Mr. Hafiz on the line. Um, I see Mr. King on the line. Is there anybody else from the applicant that we need to unmute here?
Uh, yes, this is Mitch Maslenka with Goddard Consulting.
Oh, great. Thanks, Mitch.
Yep.
And, and really quickly, just to remind everybody where we're at. We'd gotten through a decent chunk of the public hearing outline. At the last meeting, um, we asked the applicant to work specifically with Beta to, to align on the conformance with the stormwater management permit criteria. And I, I think that's really the, the, the last outstanding item or the last, uh, point of discussion that we have with regards to this proposed amendment. So, uh, I don't know, Mr. King or Mr. Hafaz, if you wanna, very quickly, uh, on the topic of stormwater, um, let us know where things, where, where you stand.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. This is Christopher King with Atlantic Design Engineers on behalf of the applicant. Try to be succinct as possible. Um, Mr. Chair, you've summed it up pretty well. Since our last meeting, we've submitted a construction sequence and then updated our Array Footprint Land Management Plan that was done by Goddard Consulting. We feel that it's been vetted by not only Beta, but we've also asked for input from Matt Farrell, who oversees the peer review for the Conservation Commission. So we've implemented their recommendations. Uh, we've listened to the planning board and specifically at the last hearing, updated the contingency plan to really put the emphasis on seed as our first contingency, if you will, with an emphasis on, you know, not just giving it one shot at seeding if it doesn't take it multiple shots. You know, we still, you know, are under the oper- operating the modus operandi. We feel like these, the seed mix, we believe in the science of the seed mix. Again, it's a pollinator mix that's both shade and drought tolerant. So it's perfect for underneath the panels. Um, grasshoppers historically had a problem controlling vegetation rather than getting it to establish on projects similar to this. Um, and so we feel the revised information incorporates all of Beta's comments, I believe. Mr. Paradise, I know he's on the phone. Hopefully he can speak up better to that. Also, Mr. Farrell's, um, recommendations have also been implemented along with some changes specifically geared towards the comments at the last planning board hearing. So with that, if you have any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But again, you know, keeping in mind this is a contingency plan. I think the first and foremost is the construction schedule, which really puts an emphasis on the stabilization of some of the concerns that I think Beta was, um, or Mr. Paradise was concerned about, you know, during construction as a whole, if you will. So we feel like those have been addressed and the revised information has been submitted. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. King. Uh, Mr. Paradise, do you wanna summarize your most recent perspective on this?
Yes. Um, so we, we did have a little technical meeting, uh, since the last meeting with the, the board. So, and we've talked about a, a few different things. One is, uh, doing as little regrading as possible and then possibly not, uh, limiting the grubbing as well. So that would reduce the disturbance of the soil. We, we're, um, uh, as we've emphasized last time as well, there's the, the stormwater management is, is suitably designed even if the vegetation, uh, doesn't take as well as, as, uh, designed. So that's, uh, that's not as big an issue as the potential erosion of the soils and, uh, within the, within this area. So, so having said that, uh, we, we discussed a few different things that, um, that they've implemented in the, in the sequence. We had a good meeting. Uh, Mr. Farrell also, uh, recommended that we use, uh, polyacrylamide additives, soil amendments for, um, s- some situations. So they've added that to, uh, to the phase one of the contingency plan in which that may, uh, provide some stability. And then, uh, phase two includes, uh, possibly adding a juke mat, mat and erosion, uh, for erosion control. Finally, and, and stage three would be, uh, stone, um, stone requirements, uh, stone, erosion control situation. And then the fourth would be the, um, the, uh, poly, poly erosion control. So, so I think there's, there's, uh, they certainly have a, a number of more, uh, uh, bigger toolbox here to use. Um, I do recommend that the, um, that this be, uh, monitored frequently. They, they're talking about four times per growing season. Seems, uh, seems adequate, uh, certainly after it's completely constructed. But I, I would, I would have, um, you know, this monitored, um, at least on a biweekly basis going forward, but, um, and possibly more if this, if we are in a stormy season. So. So I think, uh, if, if it is, if it is monitored and we work closely with the, the, the biologist on site and contractor, I think this can be, um, stabilized properly and hopefully it, it, uh, it, uh, the, the plants grow better than, than I think it will. But, uh, you know, there's, there's this alternative seed to, to remedy that. So.
Yeah. So, Mr. Paradise, just to confirm what I'm, what I'm hearing is they have, uh, multiple contingencies if there are erosion issues that in your professional opinion would, um, address the erosion? In that you're, you're recommending, uh, biweekly, observation or inspection? And would that be through the construction phase?
Right. Through the construction phase and then, um, they have a, 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 um, four times per growing season thereafter for the, for the five years. So.
Okay.
That would just be probably just a meeting and walking with the site with their biologist.
Okay. All right. Questions or comments from the board? Fran?
Uh, through the chair, uh, this is a message to the applicant. So, uh, thank you for, uh, question to the applicant. Thank you for bringing together the multiple contingency plans, uh, pollinator mix, the mats, the stones. My question is, have you had to implement any of those contingency plans in similar projects that you've had in this area? Or is this the first time that you kind of come up with the idea and laid it out as part of a contingency plan, uh, for the, for the panel?
Okay. So through the chair, I, uh, as, as, uh, Mr. King has mentioned before, we've not had to implement any contingency plans before. We've always had problems containing the vegetation, whether it's under modules or like on similar situations. So, uh, we've always had the, the opposite problem. But I, I'll let, uh, Mr. Maslenka from, uh, Goddard speak more to that. Like it was prepared, the contingency plan was prepared by them.
Yep. So through the chair, um, to answer Fran's question, uh, we have used these erosion control measures before, not necessarily on solar panel sites, but on sites with, uh, very steep slopes and, um, sensitive soils. We have successfully used these erosion control measures before, especially the juke mats. Are usually a very good backup plan.
So through the chair, thank you for the responses, Mr. Hafaz and Mitch. You know, I think having the number of contingency plans that we do allows us a, a number of fail-safe options. So I'm comfortable moving forward. I'm just curious, Mr. Hafaz, if the issue that you had, which is kind of the opposite, there's too much vegetation that grows. Was that an issue even with these lower panels, these bigger panels that were, that we're talking about now? Or were they with different types of panels previously?
Okay. So we've had combinations of this situation. There's no site that exact, that is exactly like another site. So we've had like the same distance, but different tilt angle. We've had flat modules, but different spacing. We've never had the same exact, uh, spacing and, uh, and, uh, tilt angle. But as we've provided from our landscape vendors, they've showed us pictures from other sites that are, had the same, uh, configuration. But, uh, since we couldn't provide more details and more pictures and all that, they were disregarded by, uh, Beta. So, uh, this is why we prepared all the contingency plans. But we have never had a site where we had a problem with, uh, lack of vegetation. And, uh, that's my answer. Thank, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, other questions or comments from the board? Uh, Jane?
Yeah, just one quick question, and I'm sure you folks, um, have the answer to this. But how do you handle the invasive species when they want to get in there?
So through the chair, I'll answer that for you, Jane. So part of my, uh, four inspections for the year that, or for the growing season will be me going through and taking those invasive species out. That's part of our pollinator certification process in order for us to get the gold certification. You need to have, you know, your invasive species removed.
Uh, thank you for that clarification. I knew you had a handle on it, but I, I thought it would be helpful for everyone to hear that. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, Dave? You're muted, Dave. Thank you. So I just wanted to go on record that, um, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to move these panels so close together and, uh, I'm not gonna support it. Okay. Uh, any other questions or comments for the board? Uh, with regards to conformance to stormwater management permit criteria? Okay. Um, all right. Now, just moving through our outline, um, any, are there any other comments? And I will get to public comment in a moment here, um, but are there any other comments, uh, from the, from the board? And I'm not seeing any. On waivers, there are no requested waivers. That, Mr. Hafaz, you just want to confirm? No requested waivers?
Uh, no.
No requested waivers? All right. So, so before we get to, uh, findings and conditions, um, I, since we haven't particularly, in, in particular called on the public, I do want to just give them a, a moment if they have, uh, remaining questions or comments. So for members of the public, if you wanted to say something, if you can either raise, uh, use the raise hand feature or turn on your video and wave at us, um, either one of those will work right now. I'm not seeing anybody there. Okay. So with regards to findings, um, what we'll do is review the decision criteria, discuss site plan standards and plan revisions to be made, discuss proposed findings. So again, just for folks to remember, a reminder, the decision criteria, before the planning board makes you such special permanent, it shall determine each of the following. One, the commercial solar photovoltaic installation conforms to the provisions of this article. Two, the commercial solar photovoltaic insulation will not be detrimental to the neighborhood of town. Uh, three, environmental features of the site and surrounding areas are protected and specifically surrounding areas will be protected from the proposed use by provision of adequate surface water drainage. And then, uh, and that's specific to Article 31, commercial solar photovoltaic installations. Uh, and then, um, chapter 172, stormwater management erosion control, the proposed activity must comply with the performance standards as set forth in the stormwater regulations, meeting the stormwater management standards of the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy. With regards to findings, uh, we'll go ahead and talk about, why don't we go ahead and just walk through the findings really quickly and the conditions? And then at that point, we can move forward. So the findings, um, the proposed findings would read such that, uh, the board finds the proposed activities as presented require an amended stormwater management permit. Is there a significant relative to the proposed stormwater system? That the proposed activities are shown to comply with the performance standards as set, as set forth in the stormwater regulations? And that the proposed activities are shown to meet the stormwater management standards of the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy. Uh, additionally, uh, the proposed amendments to the previously approved commercial solar photovoltaic insulation conforms to the provisions of Article 31. The proposed commercial solar photovoltaic insulation will not be detrimental to the neighborhood of, or the town. And the environmental features of this site and surrounding areas are protected and specifically surrounding areas will be protected from the proposed use by provision of adequate surface water drainage. Um, I think those are particularly nicely written findings. Um, we'll go ahead and vote on them in a little while. But, um, any questions or recommended changes from the board? Yes, Deb?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm really pleased, uh, with the applicant, um, about how thorough they've been and considered about for the wildflowers and, um, and that. I, I still haven't, and, and, and then to continue the, the positive conversation with the, um, the Indians and how they are planning to protect the Indian ruins and, um, and rock formations that are relatively significant. However, I, I, I still am very concerned that I haven't seen enough conversation about how this was gonna happen, when it was gonna happen in the construction process. And, um, so I have some, I have some concerns about. I'm wondering whether the applicant could talk to that a little bit.
So, so Deb, you, you, I'm sorry, you're referring specifically to the preservation of the Native American artifacts?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I would just say, I, I think that, that that's all covered, I think, in pretty good detail in the original um, application that was approved in 2019. And I do want to say, I don't, I don't want to get into that here because that's really not part of their proposed amendments. So the proposed amendments have to do with a couple of other things that, and, and.
But being that, Gary, just with, with all due respect, being, being the fact that this is a new applicant and a new conversation, we haven't really seen any, and really any more information that would be any more informative. The first information came scantily and slowly, um, in, in a combination, which was very dumb, very respectfully. Um, but I, I still have concerns because it's sort of like an outlier. And it, and I have some concerns as to whether that process is gonna go and how it's gonna go, considering it's a new applicant. It's a new conversation.
So, Mr. Hafaz, I'll let you comment just a second, but Deb, the, the first proposed condition that we have is that all conditions set forth in the previously approved special permit dated April 11th, 2019 shall remain in effect unless otherwise modified for this decision. So all the things that we, uh, conditioned into the approval previously still apply to this applicant.
Okay. I'm, I'm still, yeah, I'm still. Yeah, I'm still, yeah, I'm still concerned um that that hasn't been freshened up a bit. So I just don't want anything to fall through the cracks um and that not be looked after and cared for. Be being the fact they have moved things around and have shifted things. Um, I don't know the individual artifacts myself as to where their locations are and how they're going to be protected. Um, and I don't think the documents were revised to to the new conditions. If if they walk, if they are, I don't know.
Well, the the original conditions actually had a degree of monitoring from the representative tribes um throughout the clearing uh as well as the installation process. So I I think that, uh, Mr. Hafiz, do you do you want to to comment on the engagement with?
As Mr. Chair, that's exactly right. We are uh in uh contact with the tribal representative. And they sent a letter to the planning board saying that they are uh in uh talks with us. And they have visited the site twice now, and we've shared with them our construction schedule. Then we've set with them the monitoring program, and they were were working through with this and uh through this with them. And uh, and the plans mention exactly the procedures. And so we're complying to everything that's on the plans, and we are working on the monitoring with the tribe representative.
Thanks, Mr. Hafiz. Maybe what we'll do, just to sort of provide a little bit more clarity, is we'll just go ahead and read through the proposed conditions as well. So, that first condition, two point nine point two point one, all conditions set forth in the previously approved special permit dated April eleven, two thousand nineteen shall remain in effect unless otherwise modified by this decision. Two point nine point two two, the applicant shall provide the planning board a revised landscape plan showing the location of the species of plantings prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. The planning board shall review this plan for appropriateness of screening. If the planning board determines the proposed design is insufficient to adequately screen the array from neighboring properties, the board may require the applicant to redesign the screening areas uh with a number of type of species as set forth in the approved plans. Or the board may require additional plantings to render the proposed design adequate. Uh, and then two point nine point two point three, the applicant shall stabilize the areas under the array in accordance with the array footprint management plan dated March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. The principal planner shall serve as the planning board's representative as it relates to the array footprint management plan dated March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. The applicant shall implement the contingency plan as detailed in this document when determined to be necessary um by the Director of Municipal Inspections.
Through the chair, the dates for those uh for that plan should change to March twenty-third.
Yep, I thank you. So, to the members of the planning board, um, that's what we currently have for proposed conditions. I want to open it up, and are there thoughts? And again, I I do want to just remind us that we should stay focused on the amendments to the original application because we did, we do have a number of conditions in the uh original application. But um, people comfortable with those conditions? Is there anything else that we should consider conditioning into this approval or into this? Into these proposed conditions? Yes, Fran?
Yeah, yeah, uh, the chair, Mr. Chairman, just um on two point nine point two point three, they talk about the contingency plan um as detailed. Is there a separate document in the packet that speaks to level one, two, three, and four? You may have been in there, Gary, I'm I'm just trying to, I thought I might have seen something, but just, is that under the?
John's pulling it up right now.
John, you are the man of the hour. Perfect, look, perfect, thank you. I thought I'd seen it, but I was looking through it real quick and just as long as he has it at his disposal when he is doing the uh review along with the Director of Municipal Inspection.
Any other questions or comments with regards to conditions? Okay, um, so I think we're good there. And uh Lastly, just before we move forward with the vote, are there any uh any last comments from the planning board or from the public?
Well, I mean, if I I'll just reiterate my, the point that I have is that I I don't believe that our original condition in supportive preservation of the artifacts is going to be good enough. And so I have some real concerns about whether that was delineated well enough in the original, in the original conditions. Um, and and so I'm sort of torn. And and I'm not sure I can isolate whether I can agree with with um the plan moving forward because of the those original conditions.
Yeah, I I hear you, Deb. The the challenge is we can't go back and revisit everything. I mean, we we can evaluate this for what's being changed.
Yeah.
Um, but for the things that were previously approved, it's just not fair to the applicant to open everything up and and review again. John, did you have a comment?
I was gonna say through the chair, um, would it help if I shared the email that I received from Cora Pierce, who was a representative of the um the tribes? I think that might clarify it because her email while not, um, and this is in the shared folder, so you may not have seen it. Uh, you should have seen it, but you may not have seen it. Um, it's not long, but she does say that they are working closely and and have outlined that they will do onsite monitoring during clearing and construction. I'll zoom in.
I just, I just um have some, I I I think that's wonderful and I think, uh, but I just have some real questions as to whether they have been delineated well enough within the overall plans as to what needs to be preserved ahead of time. Um, so and and I and respectfully, you know, I think uh there's a potential that they they do a great job, but I don't want them to get railroaded either. Um, and I I think that there's, there is a potential that some considerations could get lost by the the massive amounts of of arrays. Um, and and so I just, I have some concerns about that.
So, a- and again, Deb, number one, uh, I I don't think this is really within the the four corners of what we're debating here. Um, n- number two, um, we have what appears to be a a very cooperative and complimentary representative of the Narragansett Tribe. Number three, we have a number of conditions in our previous approval that outline steps in order to preserve this that that don't go so as far as to define everything that might be impacted, but but have a level of of monitoring that as things change or if new things are discovered, I think is going to um accommodate that pretty well. So, uh, you know, I I don't really know what else we we should do because we've already got monitoring during all the activities. And and again, I I I think that, I don't know, I I just, uh, like I said, I I don't think that's really relevant to the dis- go ahead, Muriel, maybe you can.
No, I you were, you were doing fine, Gary, and um, Deb, I, through you, Mr. Chair, I so appreciate your commitment to the to the preservation. Um, I do think that the first decision was pretty extraordinary. And whether it it does as much as we wish it could do, I I don't know. But it it did have the ri- the support of the tribes. It did include a pretty thorough um mapping. And remember that they uh tromped through that that whole parcel together with Chris King and a team or or whoever was involved in and um, there's supposed to be a mapping and there is agreed upon observation during the construction. So it's my hope truly that the intent, the spirit, and the letter of the the original decision is being maintained. Uh, but I agree with you, Gary, we can't go back and revisit it because that's not what's being asked of us. Um, and certainly, I I hope that um the work we did with the first decision is they maintained fidelity to that. It was pretty extraordinary.
Thanks, Muriel. Uh, and I see Mr. King has his hand raised. Mr. King, did you have anything new to add?
Uh, just through the chair, I just wanted to hopefully put the concern to rest that the the subject before the board tonight, which is kind of the reorganization of the arrays, um, the 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 stones that were memorialized as part of the original decision were preserved with a new layout. And the layout was um jockeyed around to accommodate the stones that are already memorialized. And the drawings that are being submitted as part of the building permit include a sheet which specifically show those locations in relation to the arrays. Um, and you know, as Mr. Hafiz said, we've, I I think the original conditions were very stout, and we've already opened the line of dialogue well before we started any land clearing. They have the construction sequence and timing, and they've already visited the site twice. And hopefully that would um put to rest the concerns. The applicant is very aware of the sensitivity of this. Um, you have the permitting engineer of record going into the construction engineer of record, so there's some continuity there. Um, and um, through the chair, I assured Deb that um the array has preserved what we've already worked so hard to protect. And following the conditions, which I applaud again, the planning board, I think this is one of the most robust uh set of conditions I've seen personally for a solar project. Um, so, that's it.
Alright, thanks, Chris. Alright, um, so, let's go ahead and move to the findings. Uh, and I will interest in the first, we'll start with the stormwater management permit. Uh, I'll entertain a motion that the board finds that the proposed activities as presented require an amended stormwater management permit as they are significant relative to the proposed stormwater system, that the proposed activities are shown to comply with the performance standards as set forth in the stormwater regulations and that the proposed activities are shown to meet the stormwater management standards of the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. Uh, we'll start with uh Muriel.
Noah Kramer, yes.
Uh, Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave?
Dave Paul, no.
Mary?
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Deb?
Yeah, well, it, I just want to state, it really saddens me that I I just, there is, as robust as it may have been, I don't know how um contiguous wa- rocks can maintain the same alignment, solar alignment that they did and how the structure will be non-disturbed. Um, so, but being that that being what it is, um, I respectfully have to comply, but it's with resistance, um, I'm a yes.
Okay. Uh, Fran?
Randy Young, yes.
And Gary Trendle is a yes, so that uh finding carries six to one. Um, with regards to special permit, I move that the board finds that the proposed amendments to the previously approved commercial solar photovoltaic installation conforms to the provisions of Article thirty-one, that the proposed commercial solar photovoltaic insulation will not be detrimental to the neighborhood of the town and that the environmental features of the site and surrounding areas are protected and specifically surrounding areas will be protected from proposed use by provisions of adequate surface water drainage.
I'm moved.
Second.
Alright. And if there is no further discussion, we will vote. Uh, Muriel?
Noah Kramer, yes.
Uh, Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave?
Dave Paul, no.
Mary?
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Deb?
And just to continue, it deeply saddens me that we are put in a position like this from our state of Massachusetts that we need to approve these things that are disturbing um our land and our water resources and that the continuous trade-off is not equal in any way. Um, and that resources are going to be pillaged because of this. Um, but I vote resis- resistantly, yes.
Fran?
Randy Young, yes.
And Gary Trendle is a yes, so that finding also carries six to one. Um, and I guess the last part of this here is the um conditions and approvals. So I will entertain uh a motion that the board grant an amendment to the previously approved stormwater management permit as set forth in chapter one seventy-two of the general bylaws. And subject to the uh conditions that were previously arou- re- previously read allowed by the chair. So this is the uh approval for the stormwater management permit. Is there a motion?
A motion?
Mr. Chair? Your second?
A second.
Discussion?
Yes, Fran.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, this is for two dot eight dot two dot one stormwater management permit, correct?
That's correct.
Very good.
And John?
Yeah, so uh, looking at this, I put all the conditions into one thing, and I should have split them out into each decision. Um, so I think we actually need to have a condition that keeps all the conditions in the previous stormwater permit in effect because we only mentioned the special permit uh before. The stormwater management permit was October ninth of two thousand eighteen. Um, and then I would say you probably don't need to include two point nine point two point one, since that's special permit only. Or two point nine point two point two, and then include two point nine point two point three in both the special permit and the stormwater management permit.
Okay.
There you go, all that?
Yes, just to revise. So the conditions that we are including with the stormwater management permit, uh, the first would be that all conditions set forth in the previously approved stormwater management permit dated October ninth, two thousand eighteen shall remain in effect unless otherwise modified by this decision. The second condition is that the applicant shall stabilize the areas under the array in accordance with the array footprint management plan dated March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. The principal planner shall serve as the planning board representative as it relates to the array footprint management plan dated March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. The applicant shall implement the contingency plan as detailed in this document when determined to be necessary by the Director of Municipal Inspections. Is that uh aligned with your motion, Mr. DeYoung?
It does indeed, Mr. Chairman, so I will reiterate that motion.
Okay. And do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, and is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. Uh, we'll start with uh Muriel.
Noah Kramer, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Uh, Dave?
Dave Paul, no.
Mary?
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Deb?
Deborah Feingrue, regretfully, yes.
Uh, Fran?
Randy Young, yes.
And Gary Trendle is a yes. So that motion carries six to one. And then with the special permit, uh, I will entertain a motion that the board grants amendments to the previously approved special permit under Article thirty-one of the zoning bylaws, uh, subject to the following conditions. And let me just state these quickly. Uh, number one, all conditions set forth in the previously approved special permit dated April eleventh, two thousand nineteen shall remain in effect unless otherwise modified by this decision. Um, second, the applicant shall provide the planning board a revised landscaping plan showing the location of the species of the plantings prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. The planning board shall review this plan for appropriateness of screening. If the planning board determines that the proposed design is insufficient to adequately screen the array from neighboring properties, the board may require the applicant to redesign the screening areas with the number of and type of species as set forth in the approved plans or the board may require additional plantings to re- render the proposed design adequate. And then third, uh, the applicant Yep, the applicant shall stabilize the areas under the array in performance with the array footprint management plan dated March twenty-third, two thousand one. Principal planner shall serve as the planning board's representative relates to the array footprint management plan dated March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. The applicant shall implement in the contingency plan as detailed in this document when detriment, when determined to be necessary by the Director of Municipal Inspections.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, we will vote. Um, Muriel?
Noah Kramer, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave?
Dave Paul, no.
Mary?
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Deb?
Deb Feingrue, regretfully, yes.
Sundar? Oops, Sundar's not here. Fran?
Randy Young, yes.
And uh Gary Trendle is a yes, so that uh uh carries six to one. So um that wraps us up for this. I guess the only thing I have left to do is to close the public hearing, so I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for uh Wilson Street, it's Wilson Street, Cedar Street, proposed amendment to soul soul solar special permit and stormwater management permit.
Second.
All right, assuming no further discussion, we'll vote. Um Muriel?
Noah Kramer, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Mary?
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Deb?
Deb Fine, yes.
Fran?
Randy Young, yes.
And Gary Trendle is a yes as well. So um applicant, we appreciate your patience as we work through this. Um I think that we ended up hopefully in a good place. Um but um good luck and uh I'm sure we'll we'll be in touch um as this moves forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you all for your time. Stay well. All right. Um and on that note, it is uh eight eleven P M and I am going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is historic. I wanna make that motion. Muriel?
Second, Deb's second.
Deb's second, uh assuming no no discussion. Dave, any discussion?
I have this three-hour document I wanna read.
Good night, Dave. You know what? You go ahead and do that, Dave.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on closing the meeting. Uh Muriel?
Muriel Kramer, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes, and thank you.
Dave?
I won't read my filibuster, but yes.
Mary?
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Deb?
Deb Fineberg, yes.
Fran?
Randy Young, yes.
And Gary Trendle is a yes as well. So uh thanks, everyone. Not only did we finish uh early, we actually finished ahead of schedule for tonight. We had more time allotted than we actually spent, so thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Well done, Mr. Chair.
Good job, Mr. Chair.
See you all in a few weeks. And um Mary, we have some work to do on uh preparing for town meeting, so.
Yes, we do.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.